Okay, let's open the Tuesday, January 24th, 2023 meeting. Planning Board. First order of business is our minutes from the January 10th meeting.
Make a motion to accept the minutes of January 10th.
Do I have a second?
Just wanted to see if I marked them up and I did not, so I was supposed to accept.
Okay, any discussion?
I mean, you don't know.
Any discussion in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I abstain.
Okay. Next. Is approval not required plan on 60 Shawna Kill Road? This one confused me a little bit. Do we have the applicant here?
Yes. I think I figured this one out, so I'm gonna have to wait to present it, but I'll see if I was right. Dotted line, right?
Ah, you get it right.
Hi guys, I'm not sure if you can hear me. Excuse me for interrupting, but the folks on Zoom can't hear in the room.
Oh. Peter? Stop. Those were on, he put them on.
I know.
Move it a little closer. Can you hear us now, Tamika?
Yes, Tamika, can you hear us?
Can you hear me, Tamika?
It's on and batteries are good, so. Can you hear me now?
Drop the mic, that always works.
No, 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 company property, I know better.
Tamika, could you hear him?
That's working.
The greens are on, these are on.
This whole system's on. I'm just gonna do a, yes.
I'm not getting the share up there. I do have what I'm seeing here, and I do have a share there, but I'm not.
Well, let me check that also.
Thank you.
Okay. We'll wait for Tamika to get here.
Cool, I did figure it out.
She's in town.
All they're doing is taking that.
Yeah.
Yep.
But this other dotted line.
That's a easement.
Actually, if you could just hold the conversation on this.
That's what Zoom has in that room. So we don't, I don't know what.
Dad, we're muted, that's why.
Oh. From last night, everybody was muted last night, so it might be a carryover.
Was it muted? It wasn't all muted, I got it recorded.
Well, they kept asking you to unmute people last night.
That's because they don't understand that they unmute themselves.
Okay.
Are we good to go?
Tamika, can you hear us?
Now I can hear you.
I think I did a second on this, because what I have here, I believe I'm sharing, but it's not this, it didn't advance to the page. Didn't advance to the page, so I started there, but now I'm advancing the page.
When it works.
It's not showing.
Right, so let me just chuckles do this. Good.
Alright, so anyways, that was the mother's house, wasn't it?
If you could just hold the conversation, please, we're trying to get this up here. We're trying to get the image up here.
Oh, so the public can see it.
Well, we see it in front of us. Okay.
Alright.
This time it worked, for now. You're welcome.
I apologize for that, we're all set now.
So just taking that away and putting in a triangle. Yep. Was this a, so this was a parcel at one time by itself? Just a little.
No, it was.
Little part of here.
Oh, so you're taking it out of the existing. Lot 2R1 and adding it to it, correct?
Yes, 2R1, yeah.
Just taking that little triangle out there.
Just taking the line out.
Yeah, this one, this little triangle was in here, now they're adding.
But, no.
We've already done that.
That's already been done.
We're just taking the line out.
This is existing now.
Okay.
They just want to erase that lot line, that's all.
Because right now, we're getting a separate.
Two parcels.
Oh, for parcel B and A, okay. Got it, oh, I understand what you're trying to do. The book pages, that should tell me right there.
So will the acreage increase, or that includes that also?
It, it's.
Right now, it includes it.
It includes.
Yeah, 4.9.
The 4.92.
Okay.
Oh boy, how can you increase it? By a tenth of an acre?
I know, I know.
Then you can fall into chapter 61 or something.
Not even a tenth, it's like seven hundredths of a.
It's global warming, everything's.
Spanning, yeah, okay.
Keep an eye on the webpage, the town webpage in the future, hopefully the egg commission will have. I'm hoping that East Quarterland Trust will come in for a talk about giving up your development rights. You get some money for it, but there, there again, it'll stay open and your taxes go down.
Excellent.
I don't have any questions. Because that's easement, that's a utility easement line here.
I thought that was Julian.
That must go to Algr. That must go to this guy, because that easement.
Wait a minute. Wait a minute.
What do you mean?
And offer him to have the frontage. He had to have, not an easement, he's supposed to own it.
He does. He has a, I think there's a 10-foot easement in a 1-foot strip for that property on 123A.
That does not sound.
It was done before we.
No, we were here.
Yes, we were here a couple years ago.
It was.
Julian did it.
Was that?
For a house that's up on top of the hill.
Was that after we came out with the illusionary frontage?
No, it was before the illusionary frontage.
That's what I'm getting at.
It's on a whole different road.
It doesn't affect us.
Yeah. It doesn't affect them, but it affects the property owner, because he does not own it. He has an easement, but he doesn't own it. He's supposed to own it. Because you're supposed to be able to drive a car. And easement doesn't necessarily mean it can be utilized for driveway.
Yeah, I don't know. I would, you'd have to look at his deed to see if his deed's got any ownership on it. Because he needed that easement, but.
Oh, I know.
That's not what's in front of us right now.
It comes up every time we come here.
Oh, yeah.
We're all done by then, though.
Well.
I have no problem with your, your, here, it's just that.
I know.
That should have been on the other side, another dotted line.
I guess I'll do a motion to endorse, thanks, I want to say.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright. What? Boring. What?
Haven't seen this one in a while.
Sounds so familiar.
We've fallen out.
Wow.
If you see their copy, they can, we'll take a copy of that as well.
Welcome to the.
I think that's on another map, like it shows his.
No, the name, the name.
Do you want me to stamp one of these ones, Norm?
Yeah.
Okay. Where do, Dave, where do I? At the top?
Any place was convenient.
Okay.
I won't say maybe.
I'll put it right next to the board. Board stamps.
Might as well put it on the applicant's too, I suppose if they have a copy of it, yeah.
Yeah. Okay. Oh, don't get old. Does that go on?
I am not, dude, but.
I didn't think so. I'll give him.
You need to get the line on there.
Yeah. Let me try that again.
Put it on there, right on there.
Oh, it probably needs juice. Oh, let me get all this paper out of here. Physically on there. There we go, just needed a little love. Just need you to return that.
No, well, you're sleeping with your on that. Do it now? Yeah.
Alright.
Thank you. Right on the line?
Yeah.
You need them both?
No. Very good.
I like this thing.
Shawna Kill Road?
Yeah.
For a lawsuit, anyway you can get it, watch him. I'll tell you, he'll go for a lawsuit, anyway you can get it, watch him.
Ah, crap. Hey, let's get it.
Uh, no. Go to six more, maybe?
I'm gonna say yes.
That should be relatively easy.
We're done here?
Here we'll pick that.
Yeah, let's go.
What do you ask for that?
Yes, please.
No, I want, I'm gonna pass that stamp back.
Oh.
With the code and every more reason.
Do anything else to the town?
Yes, he has to bring a copy back, that's why he signed that other one to.
Say that you. When you register it in the court. Get a copy from them and return that to us.
This is all we need for the registry indeed.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. Okay, that and cash. Yeah, thanks.
Thank you so much, thank you.
Thank you. Take care.
See, I think that's all we have to sign tonight.
Yes, thanks.
Okay. And we're gonna have to take some things out of order, because our public hearing, next public hearing is not scheduled until 7:00.
Until 7? Until 7?
Quarter of 7. Yeah, we can't do it early.
Which is, I wish there was some way to get around that.
There is.
Yeah, you just.
There is, you're the boss, man.
You can talk about it offline, if you don't mind.
Okay. Because it's likely gonna affect the number.
Unfortunately, they have lots of rules for us to follow, so.
Yeah. Okay.
You do have items that you could take out of order.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking.
You have Hillside, you have a report for Bear Hill 2, for that occupancy issue, you have. The decision that you can sign, you have the planning board calendar, you have a couple of zoning board matters you could look at. Maybe you have a memo for Hilltop Estates.
Yeah, that's a long one, Dave.
Those are your options, I mean.
Yeah. I was gonna say the Hilltop, I'd probably hold off until we get to the hearing, excuse, there's a lot of meat to that, that I read at least.
Well, no. Because, basically, that's his report.
Yeah.
The hearing is not scheduled for tonight.
Oh, so we gotta continue, so it's.
It's really just for our information.
Oh, okay.
It is, and if the board wanted to discuss it, you could, if not, it's there, you now have a copy of it. The meeting was continued until the 14th of February.
Okay, that's really for information only, if you want to, I've got discussion on that.
I would. If you want to discuss it, then I'm, I'll throw my two cents in, because you already have a vague idea that what I'm gonna say about it.
So, we're doing Hilltop, what are we doing?
Far as I'm, Hillside.
Hillside, I mean, that's what I have.
Hillside, yeah.
To me, Hillside, I have a question, and that would be, because a piece of property was pulled out. Does the agritourism thing need to be readjusted? And if so, does it go to KP Law? Because of this.
So.
Are we, are we at item agenda number six?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Let me just call it up here.
Seems to me we talked a little bit about this, and at least I believe that in the. In the site plan approval. That land that has now been sold or whatever, was included as part of the.
Parking space?
Yep.
Well, whatever.
The area.
Part of the area of the special permit, or.
Site plan review.
Site plan review, sorry about that.
I think we should just maybe inform the applicant and let them do what they need to do. For updating site plan.
Yeah, have you talked with Kevin about it at all?
I have had some prior conversations regarding this issue, yes.
Anything substantial, or?
I have a recollection that there was a conversation about it, and that's pretty much as far as it's gone to this point.
Okay. So it would appear that he is somewhat at least aware?
That's my understanding.
Okay.
Alright. And as far as for us, we've already signed it. Notice sale of land enrolled in 61A program. So that, because that is a house lot now, that is not under 61A, because it has to be a minimum of five acres.
But that's not our jurisdiction.
That is correct.
So.
I would say, and this is my opinion, that we just send a letter to the select board saying, planning board doesn't see any interest in this for the town.
It's not zoned for, you know.
Yeah, I, I can.
For septic treatment plant.
Yeah, right. No, I can buy that.
I think that's all we need to do, I mean, the other stuff is definitely ancillary, but, you know, I think the select board is looking for us to give a thumbs up or thumbs down.
Yeah, no, I'll agree as far as that part is concerned, however, do we need to formally. Contact the holder of the agricultural accessory. Approval, that he does need to do something?
I think the answer is yes, but I'd probably just make it a notice that due to sale of property, need to investigate your existing site plan, something along those lines. I don't think we should be given direction, we should more of let the applicant.
No, just.
That's my, that's what I think, we should just give notice.
I didn't really get hold, I got the gist of it, well, what are you asking the staff to do here?
If we should, should send Kevin Javi, just an official notification.
So the board wants to send Mr. Javi a letter, formal notification regarding the site plan?
Yeah.
Okay. Indicating what, that?
That the, at the very least, that the area encompassing the site plan approval has changed.
That that has an effect on the prior, previously approved site plan decision?
I think that's as far as we should go, no?
Yeah.
Okay.
So do we need a motion to send a letter to the select board saying the planning board doesn't see any interest?
Yeah.
In the 61A property, so moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Do we want a motion to send that note, notice to Mr. Javi?
I don't, I think that's more of a.
Just a kind of a reminder?
Yeah, I think it's more of a discussion point, it's not really a.
Okay.
I mean, that will, that's my opinion, I don't want the rest. I feel you're right.
The standard practice is that this is for the select board's information, and that's where that would be funneled.
Yeah, okay.
I'm sorry.
So we do the ZBA stuff since that's easy.
Oh, well, let's see. Okay, that's Hillside, Hilltop. Like I say. We can discuss it if you want. Except, I won't.
Yeah, this is my opinion, if running me, I'd like just review it, and what I was gonna ask. David, for the continuation on the 14th, is we have Carl in here, just because there's a lot of meat in that report, and his, his, his report from the 18th, I'd really like to have Carl in here, so if we get to. Because there's a lot in that, in that discussion thing about refer to the board, and I'd really like his help if we get into a pinch.
Which is fine, I had a conversation with Mr. Holker on a different matter, and this came up, and he was, he indicated that he was agreeable to attending if the board wanted him to.
Okay, with that?
I am not, I, I'm, I'm done. As far as I'm concerned, I tell Mr. Blair right now, I am out of this subdivision, or whatever you want to call it. To make for ground, you, you're making the water flow, instead of staying where it is in the ground and all that, it's come above ground, it's moving fast and everything else, faster. Everything is, they're asking for variances and things like that because of the pitch, no way, I'm tired of this, no, I'm done, I will not function on that item again.
Two, four, six, eight, 10. There's 12 waivers, there's 12 waivers that are potentially out there. That's all, I don't, you guys are gonna have to help me out, and Maryland, have we ever done that many waivers on the subdivision? I know we've done five or six, I remember those.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think we've ever done that many.
Okay, alright.
I don't know.
And Mr. Blair, I remember him saying, you know, he said, you guys wanna give it up, he says, it's alright, you know, it's alright with him, but I am saying that. I've just about had it, because I feel that too many things are gonna happen in the future. And, and it's naughty town road, it's a private road. No, I'm done.
Well, I still think on the 14th, since we have to have the continuation, that we should have Carl in, and I, and I guess, David, what I'd ask for too is, just because there were some notes in there about DPW, see if Joe could be here too.
That's what I, okay.
Those two, I think, are important to be here on the 14th.
So we're gonna invite both of those.
Yeah. The, the comments about the, the two chiefs, police and fire, I think those comments have already been addressed, so I'm not worried about having those two here.
We're also circulating revised plan set to those departments, to see if they want to comment further.
And I don't have a problem, Norm, I can give Seth and Chief Monaco a call and see if there's any additional comments. Because Seth was pretty adamant, he already looked at the swing of the trucks and the, and the ambulances, so I'm fine there.
If we do that, we just would like to circle back and get those comments on the record.
Yeah, yeah, oh, yeah, I just want to remind them that they got a set, and could you get comments, if you got them, get them back to David as soon as possible.
Okay, yep.
I will say that, which is more of a general comment, that I did see that they brought the slope down, so made me feel, I know it's not, it's not 8%, I know. But we can talk about that on the 14th. Check.
Okay. Ah, see, we've still got six minutes to go. That's okay. Bryce Lemon, I don't believe we have anything on Bryce Lemon.
Nothing.
No. Rental Estates, I don't believe we have anything on.
The only thing we'd ask on, Dave, did you get that email from Mike Maroney on that, member Kali had circulated some phone calls?
I actually captured that discussion as a supplemental, you're packing under item 10.
Okay.
I put it under Bear Hill 2.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, okay.
So, yes, the information I was requesting is in there.
That's, Norm, that's all I, part of the request when he discussed with me, they said, just have Mike.
Yeah.
Give us an official blessing, and I'm good to go, and it looks like he has.
Yeah.
So.
Okay. I have not visited that lately, but. I assume they are still working on it.
Even put a stamp here, which makes me even more warm and fuzzy. So, anyhow, that's all I wanted to bring up with that, for Brit and Al, if that's been done, then it's checked off the list as far as I'm concerned. Which goes into Bear Hill 2.
Yeah. Okay, Bear Hill 2, we do have a letter, I believe that you wrote on behalf of the board.
Yes, that's the supplemental packet under item 10, under Bear Hill 2. As well as what was just referenced, the engineer's letter, structural engineer's letter stamped.
Yeah. In, in reading it, I say, very nicely written.
Yeah. Everybody okay? Yeah. Did, the only thing I had, Dave, did Dave McCray have any issues with what we were intending to do for the occupancy, did he give you any feedback?
Certificate of occupancy was issued.
Okay, that means he didn't have any issues. Okay, good.
Okay.
Thanks.
I think the building commission was helping getting something for the planning board individually through its members on this matter.
Yeah, okay, good.
Okay, on to item 11, we have four minutes still.
That's in a supplement too.
And.
Item 11? Oh, we don't have, item, yes, item 11 is ready, yes.
Findings. And that one there. I had asked DCR about Zone A.
Yeah.
And all that, and he has requested from the applicant. Information, so, and they still have not received it yet from him.
Okay.
Because it's right on the swamp there, that feeds into Pine Hill Reservoir.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So, should we?
That's, that's one of the things I, I feel, you know.
Behind it with all the wetlands and everything?
Yeah, we should put things in order.
Correct.
And I know that we're not the Concom and not DCR and all that jazz, but I don't want to give.
We don't want to go back.
You might say, but we got this.
Yeah.
You have to give us that.
I don't really think the two are that closely related. The question is, does the plan reflect the requirements?
Well, I know for planning board. That is correct.
Yeah.
I think the answer is yes, because we, the attorney gave us the thumbs up, because the opening was wide enough. That was the only question I thought was on the table.
The opening was wide enough, but not the location where it was going to be.
If he can't build on one or two of those lots, that's his.
Yeah.
His problem.
Again, this is my opinion, I don't have a problem signing this.
I don't either.
I, I, I agree with you, Dick, that the Concom needs to dot the i's and cross the t's, but.
Tim, if I may, the Concom has already issued a warrant conditions for this property as well?
Oh, they have?
They have, but did DCR ever get their information that they asked for?
I can't speak to that, because it's not jurisdictional to Concom, but we do know that they've been in contact with the DCR.
Oh, so this is a separate thing, Dick, DCR, okay. Three different, four, five different departments.
Here we go, I mean, you're just adding more to the pile.
Well, that's, that's gonna be Dave McCray's. Requirement to make sure all of the ducks are in a row before he issues any type of building permit or driveway cut from Joe, so I agree with you, but I'm just.
I know, I know, I'm just saying that.
I guess I'd, I'd make a motion to. I guess I'd, I'd make a motion to sign the two lot common driveway decision.
Yeah, I have the main copy here. Now, Tim, were you at the twelve thirteen meeting, or did you watch it?
Yes, but I didn't send it to, uh, Nita, I didn't send the, the paperwork to her.
I mean, we need three signatures on this.
I'll stay out then.
I think we have enough signatures.
Yep, yep, I'll stay out then, that'll, that'll make it legitimate, I'll stay out of this, so I rescind my motion.
You still have to motion, I, oh, maybe all these.
I'm just gonna stay out of it completely.
Norm, I'm just gonna say that he's passing the things.
Yeah, you're, you're making the motion?
I will make the motion that we sign the, uh, common driveway.
Decision.
Decision.
Second that.
With complications. Why would, uh, did you take the bow?
No, I don't think I did.
I don't think so either.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, then I'll sign now.
Don't mind.
You're not so, used to something to people, aren't you?
Guess ma- makes me nervous, yeah. Sure.
Thanks, Norm.
Great, thank you.
Okay, we are past seven o'clock, we can go back to our regular ordered agenda here. So, item three, in public hearing, fifty-two Paddock Road for special permit for an accessory dwelling unit. And, and we have the application.
Service, I don't have any issues.
And is the applicant here for this one? Yep, okay, uh, you can step up if you want. And assuming this is an already existing structure, right? It's just kinda formalizing it.
That's my CIA.
And, I don't know, anything that you really feel you need to say about it, or?
Um, I just, I wanna add another meter, so it's an in-law apartment, or it was. And was told the bylaws changed last year, that, that addition had been put on since two thousand eight. So, um, I just wanted to keep the electric meter separate.
So this is existing, this is all built, oh, okay.
Two thousand eight.
So I was looking at something like, there's a door thing, and there's a door, but it looks like they're already there, so.
I know, it, it all seems like it's a brand new thing I'm trying to do, but it's our, it's.
And this is first floor, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
They're just trying to legalize it.
We're just trying to get the electrician to get the permit to put.
Not that it's particularly our business, but apparently there was some question about the septic system as well.
Yeah, I couldn't, I can't put two plus two together, now, I feel like that's not, I, I understand that it's an issue right now with the town, but that issue fell through the crack in two thousand eight with the builder in attack. So whether you didn't have somebody in the place that cared, or, you know, I don't know what happened.
It's a water health issue, no matter what, it's not our issue.
Yeah, and at the time, I think they had a problem with it.
Yeah, that couldn't work.
Or maybe they got paid off, I don't know.
Don't, yeah. Let me give you, let me give you a bad, this is being recorded.
Well, I don't, I don't know, I don't know what happened, but yes, now, um, I'm going, I'm going with Rich on the, uh, septic inspection.
Does that hold us up on twelve, Norm, or?
But like I said, it's been built since two thousand eight, so it's been holding the septic.
Yeah, that was the only thing I was gonna ask.
Uh, I, I guess the, the only thing that I would say is that in issuing the special permit, uh, I think we probably need to make a condition that all necessary reviews and permits will be obtained.
So that I get the septic system, um.
You, you, you get the royal stamp of approval from the Board of Health.
Yeah, um, I just don't know if they do that in the, in the winter time, I mean, I guess I can call the guy I have pumped for.
If they have to do a title five.
Yeah, it's a title five.
That.
F C Lynn at the Town Hall.
Yeah.
Secretary.
Because they.
Well, I had the guy that pumped it a couple of years ago, he's, he's been in touch with me, because he, Rich called him, um, and he told me if I needed to get the title five, he'd be happy to do it for me.
Yeah.
And Rich wanted to be down there with him at the same time, I just didn't know if they'd do it with the snow and that.
Well, snow doesn't hurt, but.
No.
Thing is, there's almost no frost on the ground either.
Yeah, trust me, there is.
Oh boy, plowing is interesting. So they probably can do it.
So you're saying as soon as I can get that done, um, and get, get that approved, that I can have the, the permit for the electrician?
That, well, permit for the electrician, I.
That would be under, uh, Lester, right? That's not us, Lester, Lester Grace would issue the permit.
Let's, let's put it this way, I don't see that we, maybe I'm reading people wrong, I don't see any hesitation in approving this.
No, no.
And then our part of it is done and it's.
Yeah, only thing we'll put the condition is, is that you just gotta get this.
Yeah, I'll take yours.
Yeah, 'cause the.
My question was just if it could be done at this time of the year, because I just wanna move forward, it's been.
If it has to, if it has to wait to spring, I don't think that's a big deal either.
Yeah, 'cause the, once you got the special permit, Lester will just probably, again, I don't wanna put words in his mouth, but issue a permit for electric and then whoever you got, the electric to come in to put the meter on the side of the house and hook it up, or break it up, whatever you're doing.
Yeah, but he had already started the work because he was told he could get the permit, and then when he went to get the permit, we said.
Okay, yeah, alright.
Does the building inspector have to issue a new occupancy permit then for that in-law apartment?
Yes.
He's gonna issue a permit for accessory dwelling unit.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. So.
Well, um, I guess.
Any, any further discussion from the board?
I was gonna do a motion.
Hold on, is there anything from the public? Any comment, questions? Anybody on Zoom? Hearing done, uh, I'll entertain a motion to close the hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And next motion?
Motion to issue a special permit for an accessory dwelling with the condition that the sewage treatment system is signed off by the Board of Health. Per section twelve of our.
Yeah.
Special permit requirements.
There, there will also be the other standard conditions, which is.
Yeah, 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 plus our boilerplate conditions.
Yeah, just that it, it, it meets the requirements of the special permit, you know, in terms of square footage and all of that kind of stuff.
Yeah, much as I said, it's already been, it's already, it's been there for years.
Yeah, so it's already there.
Doing its thing, so.
Yeah.
Nice second that.
Okay, any discussion on that? Hearing done, once again, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, uh, Dave, how long do you think it'll take to get that written off?
Um, I have several, I have a few I have to take care of, I'm gonna try to do it as soon as possible, draft it by the next week hopefully.
Which is February fourteenth?
That's correct.
Yeah.
And, so, okay, can you just, I'm not familiar with any of this stuff, do I just come here to pick something up?
No.
You don't even have to.
Once the decision has been drafted, the board will sign off on it, then the day after that it'll be filed with the town clerk's office, then a mailing will be sent out to you notifying you that it has been filed with the town clerk, after that does an appeal period, a point is, after that time ends, the special permit decision needs to be filed with the registry of deeds in Worcester, at which point your building permit can be issued.
I could build a new neighborhood by then.
Welcome to the world of government.
I'm just trying to give you information.
Okay, so how long is this gonna, how much longer is this gonna take till I can get the permit for the electrician?
Well, you, you gotta get through the title five or the, the Board of Health.
The title five, I'm not, I'm not worried about, he, I'm, Adam was really good when I had him pump the, the system, he, I'm sure he'd be.
You'd like to contact me tomorrow by phone, we can discuss the timelines and I can give you, I can give you a schedule.
Contact you by phone or email?
Tomorrow, I, a phone call will be good.
Okay.
I'll give you the exact details for the timelines.
I'll make it easy, when you call the town, hit three and then hit seven.
Three and seven?
Yep, and you'll get right to Dave.
Alright.
I don't know, I just know it's three and seven. Forty-one hundred is three and it's seven, I got Dave.
Appeal period to do anything. It's just that if she does something before the end of the appeal period, it's kinda at our own risk.
Well, I'm giving, I, I, I can't give that advice, I, I can give the conservative advice, at all risk, and I can't, I'm not comfortable getting into those, into that scenario.
It's just, it's very, very unusual for us to get an appeal on anything like that.
Right.
Yeah, it was kinda put to me like it would be simple, it was already done, the bylaws changed after the, you know, it was already there, so it'd be like a very funded thing.
The hottest thing is that if anyone wants to appeal, they have to appeal to Superior Court, Land Court, it's not appealing to us. So.
Okay, so I'll call you tomorrow?
Yes, we can talk about a particular detail of what happens next.
Okay, is there a better time to get ahold of you?
If you have to leave a message, feel free to do that, I'll get back to you soon.
Alright, so, okay, three's gone, two's done, so we can go on to four. That's seven past seven ten, Tim.
Okay, we're okay. Okay, seven ten, this is a public hearing continued for a special permit for auto sales and repair at one seventy-five Barry Paxton Road. And then we have the initial information and then we also, I believe, have some supplemental information.
So you opened up the public hearing?
Yes.
Yeah.
And I guess first of all, uh, do you have anything that you wanna present to us here at this point?
Uh, at this point, no, I haven't presented.
We can move that back, because we only moved it up front.
Yeah.
There, let me do this.
Those legs are kinda warped.
Yeah, Mike's not your friend, your name's not Mike, right?
No, 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 no.
I guess I'll just make, make a note that we did a site walk, and that was last Saturday?
Yes, yes.
Yeah. And, uh, I don't know, I guess just quick comment, looking at the piece of land, it's, it's a flat piece of land, uh, they've got crush rock covering most of the area, uh, it looks like there's reasonable line of sight in, in both directions along the road, uh, I didn't see any river running down the middle of it. Anybody else, any, any comments from that?
No, I, I'm, I'm happy with it.
I just had the trailer office bathroom, but there's a house next door and I'm presuming you own it, so that would be the bathroom issue solved.
I do want it, sir.
Yep, so I'm, I'm fine with that.
Now, we did, at that site walk, uh, informed the applicant about, and sent him some additional information of, of another application that we felt was more complete than what he had submitted, and we do have, since then, uh, some supplemental information. And I guess all I'll ask is if that information is sufficient for the board, or sufficient voting to you.
A request was made for further information of the applicant, and the applicant provided what he provided, uh, to the board.
The only question, Norm, I had was it said delivery during business hours, that delivery will be brought onto the property, it won't be out on.
Correct.
That's all I needed, I just wanted to make sure there wasn't no trucks or anything like that.
No truck on the road, no.
Yep, that's it, I'm good.
I did have a question about, um, your hours of operation, that probably is in here somewhere, but the, uh, lighting? The lighting, the, you know, that you were operating after dark, we drew up.
Lighting, yes, I have, I have on the drawing.
He did this.
It's actually solo lighting.
Yep, there it is, that front one, right there, that's all his stuff that he added right there in the first bit.
Right, but I wondered where they were.
Oh, location, that's a good point, there wasn't.
On this one, right there.
Oh, they're on the supplement, I missed that, so.
I mean, I see this notation, so you, you would have one in the back corner and then one over here. And this would be a lighting as well.
That's actually the most lit up part of the whole road.
Oh, that was in the original.
I know, you get to his house, could you see all the lights? By the way, I'm Craig Alexander, I'm a consultant.
Okay.
I've been a construction consultant for forty years, and, um, I'm just here to help appease the butters and see what their ideas are, we don't own two of those from the Glotlands, raised his family, he owns his property, and we wanna do what's right by the neighbors, but it's his property, and we wanna pass the laws, do everything right by the book, so we're here to ask permission for this, and also to ask what the neighbors would like to see done with that property, I think that's the best way to approach it.
I got a question.
Sure.
Mr. Sherry, can we?
Yeah, that's, that's, first, first line, I just wanna have to clear the board, are there any other questions or comments from the board?
The only thing I saw was there, is this gentleman gonna be running it?
Yes.
So it's your property and you're having, but you're leasing it to him, you're not assigning him as an employee?
Rent, what, thirty day lease, thirty, well, thirty days, that's thirty days lease.
Okay, that's the only, I was reading through the documents, I wanted to make sure I was correct when I read, okay, good enough, thanks.
Anything else from the board? Okay, anything from the public?
Actually, before you go, if I could, if you could just make sure you get people's names and addresses on the record, so that the desk can be taken correctly.
Okay, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, my name's Bill O'Hearn, I own house lots diagonally across from this gentleman, okay? My question is, quarter of a mile down the road, there's a business, right, they're fixing vehicles and selling, diagonally across the street, there's another, why do we need another business selling vehicles and repairs? And there's no, all repairs have gotta be done. And there's no, all repairs have got to be done outside, 'cause there's no building. It don't make sense.
My understanding, Norm, just a, this is sales only, no repair?
It is no repair.
It is no repair.
No repair, sales only.
No repairs, just sales.
Okay.
And to interject with that, after talking with Julian and meeting on this, it's already met all the specs that you have for a mixed-use lot, which means you could build a house and sell cars there without a special permit. So I'm kind of trying to understand, try to bridge the gap between the abutters to make them happy, and Mr. McLaughlin, which is raised his family, owns that property, he has rights that are set by you, and we're following those rights, but we also want to concern ourselves with your concerns. And what the people do a quarter mile down the road either way, really doesn't concern him, we have no control over that.
It concerns us.
But what we can control is what happens across the street from you.
Yeah.
So we can put in, we can go for special permits for like forty low-income houses or we can sell cars, but right now...
Go with the low-income houses, that's what you're about to ask.
Well, right now, that's his property, it's his property, and he's got to do what he's got to do to maintain his family. And I'm sorry if it upsets you, there's a garage down each way, but quite honestly, it's not his problem. He can't solve that problem. If I could, I would solve it. Those are established businesses. He owns his land, he has the right to do what this board says he has the right to do, and right now, in my opinion, this meeting is not necessary. From what I know from the planning board, reading the specs and talking to Julian, it's already been approved for that.
It's a special permit, he doesn't have a special permit.
But why is it a special permit? I'm, I'm, I'm just curious, I'm trying to, to see, I've never worked around it.
It's in the bylaw.
I've worked in forty towns doing this, I've never, I'm, I'm just trying to understand what, what the confusion is here.
There's a special permit per the bylaw that he has to get.
Okay, all right, 'cause why, maybe I misunderstood, when I talked to Julian, he said that that was approved for mixed use.
The area is, yes, but there, inside of that bylaw, there's sections of entitlement...
If I don't know anything, I'll ask, you know what I mean?
Yeah, yeah, no, that's fine, that's why I'm explaining. There's entitlement as part of that mixed use, and then there's a section where you have to get a special permit for use in that mixed use. And this is one of the, one of the, um... Yeah, thanks, that needs a special permit.
I truly understand your issue, I truly understand it, trust me, I'm a father, I have houses, I know people that build around me, I've been building for forty years. We can't control everything in what he does, we control what he does, not what the other people do. What he can do is maintain his property, is to make sure it does not take anything away from your property, that we can guarantee, and that's in the bylaws. If he breaks the bylaws, then he's gonna lose a special permit.
Yeah, I, I just...
Am I, am I right, or is that a fair assumption?
Well, you know, you say that now, you can guarantee it.
I can guarantee it, I can say it.
You just said, "I can guarantee it."
No, I said, "I can take, we can do what we can," if I did, I misspoke. He could, he can guarantee what he's gonna do on his property. He could, I can't guarantee what he, I don't know. I know he's hired me to be here because there's a confusion, and my job is to make sure the abutters are happy and we can do what's best for them, and, and, and come to you and say, "Sir, what can we do better? We don't have the money to throw a million dollars in there." Right now, he's struggling to feed his four kids, single father, hurt in a prison, not, 'cause he was prisoner, he was a prison guard and hurt, so he's raised four infants, and now he's looking for help from the town so he can maintain his home. And he's not trying to offend you, but at this point, it's, it's a matter of maintaining his, his land.
I don't begrudge anybody that wants to start their business.
Okay.
Okay? And thrive out of it, but my question is, why do we need another?
You don't need another one, he has the right for it, you don't need it. You don't need another Cumberland Farms, you don't need another Softy Shop, you don't need Amazon, but they have the right to do it.
So what's the special bylaw?
It's a special permit.
You said a bylaw?
Well, in the bylaw, you need a special permit to establish the use in, in the mixed use.
To establish, okay.
Simply say what it's for.
It's part of the process?
Yeah.
That we're in on bylaws, everybody.
Hold on, hold on.
You know, there are a lot of different conditions that are going to come under a special permit. And I, I, I do have a question about your hours, the hours of operation, is that in there?
Yeah, it's right at the top, ma'am, it says seventy-nine.
No, is it seven to nine?
That's all. Okay, I'd, I'd just like to comment that, you know, the fact that there happen to be two...
Just so you know, while you're, if you need to give me a call, okay?
The fact that there happens to be two other used car sales things, you know, nearby, has no effect on whether or not he should be able to do one?
But it's gonna be...
Okay.
You're saying because there's two on the road, that they can still have another one on the road, it doesn't matter?
Yeah.
No, I just think, why do you need it?
The other thing that might...
It's just allowed, that's the thing.
Another point that you had made, that they were gonna be doing repairs, I mean, that was an earlier proposal.
Yeah, that's why I thought we're still doing repairs.
It's not included under this special permit.
So that's, so there won't be no repairs?
Not under this particular permit.
I got another question. Why do you have fifty, probably fifty tires over there?
I don't think these are planning board questions, just to interject, that's Board of Health, if I'm not mistaken?
Yeah, that is, that's not a...
Okay, so, skip on to the next thing?
If he wants to answer it.
Yeah, great. If he wants to sell used tires, he can sell used tires.
It's just a border.
We just put a line to see the, to organize and draw everything out of the...
If that, if that does bother you, we can move that and put post-markers in.
Avoid it, we can make us, like, fast everything.
Listen, you guys hired me for a reason, let me deal with this, okay?
Thirty, thirty-day lease, who's that about?
Well, that's the gentleman that's leasing the property from him, for thirty days.
So it's a thirty-day renewable lease?
It's pretty much, he pays us a rent, he stays there if he doesn't need it.
Yes.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, my name is Christina Ordong, I'm here on behalf of myself and my husband, who's out there with our baby daughter, so if you hear a baby squeaking, that's, that's what's going on.
She's awake. Here, she's awake.
Um, I have a variety of comments for the board, and then I have some questions for the applicants, and I want to start off just by saying, you and I have had a couple of great conversations, Sean, and I completely respect that it's your property, and that you have a desire to open a small business there, and so I'm hoping that my comments can be heard by the board and we can get some clarity from your application. Those supplemental materials were not included in the board packet, and so the public does not have access to them at this time. So I have a couple of questions just related to what you guys have talked about, beginning with operating hours. I heard that you said that it's seven AM to nine PM, is that Monday through Friday?
It's seven days a week.
Seven days a week?
Yes. Not, it doesn't have to be, but we're not gonna limit to what days.
Yeah.
All car dealers should show up on the weekends.
Understood.
So...
And the building on your site plan, we talked, and you had said that that's a trailer, it's not, it says office, not building, and that's gonna be a trailer, and then you guys clarified that access to running water in a bathroom would be for employees through the residence's personal home, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. My comments for the board begin with, and I'd like to just go through my, my comments and then ask a few questions, if that's okay with the people here. My first comment is that this business would reduce my ability to sell in the future, it degrees the character of the area, and it makes the area less desirable, to the point of the fact that there's two similar businesses on the same street. I purchased a home fairly recently, my first home in the quaint town of Rattland, and I did not purchase a home on Route Nine. I respect that it is an area that's zoned for businesses, and we can get to that a little bit later on, before we get to my questions here. So the Village Center District that we're in here now was created primarily to serve the neighborhood, and we have a good turnout of the neighborhood here, and it's to provide a mix of uses, and so although the fact that there's two other businesses that are similar in the area certainly does not prevent this special permit from being issued, it is kind of contrary to the bylaw because it's not a mix of uses. This business doesn't bring vibrancy to our community, it seems redundant, and there is a really great opportunity for a different kind of business to open there, or for our community to help that, meet that ten percent forty threshold. Although, as the property owner, that's your right. I'm sure that I'll have more comments sort of along the way, but if it's already, I'd like to get into some questions for the applicants.
Glad to.
Thank you. All right, so in your, and again, this, your supplemental materials that you provided were made public, so I don't have access to them, and so if you've clarified this information with the board...
Quite honestly, you, that, that's been clarified with the board, I assume, and that's where you would go for that information?
So they get to make that information public, I'm not faulting the applicant at all, but I may be redundant in my questioning. So the first review criteria is to lessen the congestion of the street, and as a used car dealership, I would think that your ultimate goal is to increase congestion, to obtain more customers, and so the first criteria is to, to lessen congestion of the street, and so what is your plan there, and how does this business lessen the congestion of the street?
Actually, I, I could answer that if you'd like. It really doesn't matter as far as the law goes.
It matters for the special permit.
Can I finish, I bet you finish?
Yes.
So, it really doesn't matter as far as the law goes, but as far as courtesy, it matters a lot, and to me, being a professional, we do not want to upset the abutters, we want to make them happy. You wouldn't sell your house for ten dollars, he has the right to do with his land what he wants, as long as it's safe and it passes laws, he's doing that. We do not want, he's hired me for a reason, 'cause I'm good at what I do, and I make sure the abutters are happy, unless they're unreasonable, then we go forward with the law.
Yeah.
So I'm here to bridge that gap. You wouldn't forfeit your land or have a special purpose put on it if it's already zoned for it. When you bought your house, you didn't know that these were mixed lots, I understand that.
No, I knew that they were mixed lots.
Then that's anticipatory law, which means that you have to anticipate at some point, that he could put a manufacturing business back there that would really screw up your day, but he's zoned for that, but he's just saying, "Can I put eight or ten cars on my lot to help feed my kids?" That's all he's trying to do.
And how would it lessen the congestion of the street?
It's not gonna be a herd chambers, excuse me?
How would it lessen the congestion of the street?
That doesn't matter.
Well, it does matter because it's part of the special permit requirement.
But that's been addressed.
I'm asking you to address it for the public now.
I'm saying, any information for that, I have not been privy to it, it's been forwarded to the planning board.
It's part of your application requirements.
It's been forwarded to the planning board, that's where you get your information, not from us. They are here to gather the information and put it together for you, as a resident and taxpayer, that's what their job is, right?
Did they answer that question in their application for you?
In, in terms of lessening congestion, in terms of the use of that bylaw, it basically means, how do I want to phrase this? That whatever additions are made in terms of the way of businesses and that sort of thing are designed in a way to minimize additional congestion. As an example, not having four driveways coming off of a parcel of business that, or a parcel of land that has a business, okay, where, yeah, we're gonna have all kinds of different traffic turning and so forth, rather only do one driveway.
And you guys did that, you did one driveway, one entry and exit.
Can I clarify something for you, there, that, as far as zoning is concerned, there's, by law, without any special permits, there's three lots that are available back there that can be mixed use, and they can have a manufacturing plant. That's what you're, from what I interpreted from Julian, that's what's there, and I do my homework, I wouldn't be here if I didn't do it, and we're not here to upset the neighbors, the guy's just trying to feed his kids, not build Amazon or Herb Chambers. He's got eight or ten cars, maybe sometimes three cars, you know, maybe thirty cars, but it's, it's not going to impede or hurt, it's gonna be taxes for the town, it's his land, it's a perm, a special permit, I'm not really sure why, but it's here, so we'll deal with it at that, and I will answer any questions. But I can't bend the law to help you or to help him, I can only interpret the law, which by the way, most of the code, and this is a matter of interpretation, so it's very easy for you and I, but we can sit here calmly and have a discussion, and I'll be glad to answer anything, but the bottom line is, it's written for a reason.
I'd like to make it clear that there's no manufacturing plant that could be issued through there, because that's not an option through the Village Center District.
Okay, okay, maybe not, but I know it is mixed use, so there could be stores, there could be whatever, there was mixed use, so maybe, maybe not, but it could be a lot worse than, than cars.
And it could be a lot better, too.
Well, you want to sell your house and do it? He doesn't want to, he wants to feed his kids, what's your priority?
Okay.
I have a few more questions for the board.
I mean, we've answered the question.
Excuse me, you're running off at the mouth.
What's that?
You're running off at the mouth.
Okay.
Slow down.
Okay, so you do know that this is recorded?
Yes.
Yeah, I'm answering her questions.
You're doing...
Through the chairman is where you're supposed to be answering it.
Okay, well, she asked me, so, I'm sorry.
Should I pose my questions through the chairman?
I'm sorry, ma'am, I didn't realize that we weren't supposed to have a dialogue.
Me too.
Okay.
We're on the same page here.
Technically, it should be through the chair, yes.
My next question is again related to the application, and the materials that were made public, it says they answered yes, and how they would be conserving health, security, safety from fire, flood, panic, and other dangers, they answered yes, and I'd like to learn more about that response.
Did you read your question?
Yes. So, the second requirement in the permit, special permit application related to the zoning bylaw...
So what were your examples, fire?
To conserve health and secure safety from fire, flood, panic, and other dangers, they answered yes.
Now, so your question, so that I understand it, is how the auto sales company is going to protect your neighborhood from floods?
It's part of the application, and they said that this business would be doing that, and so I suppose my question is a how question, especially because there's a trailer on the lot, there's a variety of different vehicles, and there's no access, there's no access to running water, so we have a question of fire, I think is relevant. They could have answered not applicable, they could have given a more thorough response, but they gave a one-word answer of yes.
Well, that's an interesting question. I'm not sure how you would protect my, how that someone would be responsible for doing that. That form is, is definitely outdated, it was written to be a multipurpose form, so it doesn't, a lot of it doesn't, it needs to be revised, number one. And number two, I'm at a loss for words myself, how a company would be responsible to protect from flood.
I believe that the questions on the application directly relate to the Village Center District portion of the zoning bylaw, and I agree with you.
One way to interpret that question is that you weren't doing anything on your property that could result in a flood, and there's very few things that would probably result in a fire. Now, I'm just asking you if that's reasonable because I'm...
I think that's reasonable. I do think that...
So the answer could be that they would not have excessive flammable materials on their property, and is that the kind of answer that you want?
And that we go through the fire department.
Or go through the fire department?
I've got a, sort of, somewhat answer. My understanding is for buildings and trailers, they have to be inspected, and if I remember correct, the fire chief's gonna require a fire detect, a fire detector inside of the trailer, or a smoke detector, I don't, I don't remember exactly, I'm not, I'm not, I'm an FPA, but it's boiler side.
It's actually a CO as well.
CO, yes, thank you. And then, from the flood standpoint, if there's no changes made to the land grade...
Yeah.
That's sort of eliminating any potential flood purposes. The panic, I, I can't, I mean, the panic in town, I guess as long as they don't have a, some type of range there, or...
Yeah, I think as long as there's humans there, it could be panic.
Well, that could be said anywhere on the planet, so...
It could be panic inside your house.
It could be said here.
Other dangers, I think, a lot of, a lot of that portion of the special permit was left, 'cause the planning board on a special permit has a lot of wide berth in their review, and that's why when they do a site plan, if they see something that would be considered a danger, it can be brought up as part of a contingency for the special permit or a condition. So I'm hoping those answered your questions, and if the applicant has any...
I don't wanna be said that I'm running at the mouth again, so when you ask me a question, I'll answer it, that was not appropriate, sir.
What?
Well, let's, so, let me ask, did my response...
That's fine. Yes, yes.
Okay, alright, thank you, that's all I want, I made some quick notes, so I wanted to make sure that I could help your questions, and I wanted to make sure I didn't overstep with the applicant.
Thank you, thank you for the respect.
I have a few more questions related to the application that was completed, but based upon your comments, and the fact that this is a application that's used for a variety of different purposes, I think I can move on to the more sort of pertinent parts, at least in my opinion, so we have to conserve the value of land and buildings, including conservation of natural resources, and prevention of blatant pollution of the environment. You guys answered yes to this, I'm sorry, and, and my perspective, a used car lot would be, you know, enhancing pollution of the environment, although it's wonderful that you're not building on the land, but you're certainly not conserving natural resources, and in the beginning of my sort of comments here, I talked about decreasing my ability to sell in the future, and so I, I don't view it as conserving the value of the land, because it will be decreasing the desirability of the land, and so I'm interested in why you guys answered yes to that question, and any mitigations that you guys have in place in your car dealership for oil, for any pollution.
We're conserving it because it's staying the same as it is.
There's no topal change, which means there's no grade changes, there's no flood changes, there's nothing.
You've been to and seen the land, it's the same as it is.
Yeah.
It's been there like that for hundreds and hundreds of years.
So it's not gonna change.
You know, you said it's been that way for a hundred years, that's not true.
Well, I mean, that was, that was like, no, it's just like it's been there a long time.
He brought a lot of fill in to that property.
Well, what's happened before I got here, sir, I have no, I...
You just said it, it's been there for a while, yes.
I don't wanna yell that, I'm just, I don't know what happened before I got here.
Excuse me, sir? You need to speak to the chairman.
Okay, alright, sorry.
Thank you for that explanation, the next question I have is, you guys answered not applicable to not creating a nuisance of air-water pollution, covered that flooding, noise, dust, vibration, lighting, are visually offensive structures and accessories, I would consider used cars visually offensive structures and accessories, so I do think that's applicable, and if you'd like to pair that now with any mitigations that you'll be taking for Butters when it comes to your landscaping plan, I'd be very interested in hearing more about that.
Norm, I think...
We've done everything, we've done everything you've asked, we've done everything you've asked.
The town has voted, let's...
Let's let go that we've done everything you've asked, and we will do whatever you ask, and we believe we've accomplished that.
I guess through the chair, I was gonna say, I understand that the cars and, and that are considered visually offensive, but since it's part of the bylaw, and it was voted on at the town meeting to approve this, that's part of the special permit, so I understand that it's your opinion, that, but the town has voted saying that it's okay to have this type of business in a village center, so I personally on the board can't say no to an individual that wants this, because it's their right to come to us with a special permit and ask for this type of business, so I'll shut up, Norm, that's as far as I'm aware.
Along with that, part of the bylaw includes landscaping and appearance, the applicant shall incorporate appropriate landscaping and design elements, so I'm interested to hear about your landscaping plans.
I don't, I don't have any, it's staying the way it is, I mean, it's just, no.
No, that's good, the answer's, the answer's been answered, it's redundant, so we'll fast track with you guys, whatever you got.
So that there is no plan to do any landscaping?
Again, leave it open for the vehicles to be viewed from the...
Same as it is.
Okay, thanks.
How many cars are you looking to have on your lot in a best-case scenario?
Approximately thirty, I'd say.
Thirty cars?
Approximately.
And that's, I, I, I'm gonna speak to her directly, with your permission, that's a wish list, by the way.
In a best-case scenario?
I'm going with five or ten, but that's a wish list.
But I'm saying thirty, just to, just to cover my rear end for the future, 'cause you never know.
You got thirty spaces on your, on your design, that's good enough.
I have a few more questions, but if this woman would like to jump in.
I just have a question related to that, this BethCo Bay, I'm at 184, very packed in, so I'm kind of opposite on the gentleman here, the amount of spaces I believe were cars available to be on, is that determined by the police department, based on the size of the lot, I thought?
Police department, I don't...
I think what you're talking about is, if I remember, the little laws is unregistered vehicles, and if they're selling cars, they, I'm hoping they're registered at the state.
Well, they don't get registered, so they're all, they're all gonna be unregistered.
Right.
They'll be titled, but unregistered.
Yeah, that's what I meant, not, there's a difference.
There's a big difference on that one, actually.
I think I'm thinking of the parking lotment.
In Rutland, there was, I think it's three or five, I forget the exact numbers, it's three, thank you, that, of unregistered vehicles, the max you can have on, two?
Two unregistered out in the open, or you put them under cover.
Okay, okay, good enough, I hope that answers.
Now, they don't...
Norm, I'd like to make a point to this young lady, that you're worried about the information that we have on our packet here, we have two pages which concern this, the rest of this is concerning multiple things that are coming up before the board.
Thank you.
So you could certainly share, may I see that back?
Oh, absolutely.
Definitely like to share that, this first page says hours of operation, solar lights for security.
That was my next question, thank you.
Pardon me?
That was my next question, thank you.
Office trailers and shed in the rear of the property, parking for approximately thirty vehicles, delivery of vehicles during business hours, the second page, if I can get it apart, is a map, so just so that you understand that this is public record notes here, I don't have a packet of information about this project, this is it, you could pass that around if you'd like to.
Thank you very much, my comments were that in the planning board packet, these documents were made available to the public for this meeting.
Those are notes for planning board members.
Only?
Not only, it's just for our information.
Mr. Chairman.
Things that have come up when the, you know, when, before the meeting has taken place.
Mr. Chairman, just to address that comment about this information not being made available to the public, this information was received in the office yesterday, and a supplemental packet, per normal practices, was assembled and made available to the board, with the expectation that the information could be shared with the public at tonight's meeting.
Thank you.
And, that is my information.
Thank you for taking the time to answer my questions, I'd like to reiterate, the purpose of the Village Center District is to provide opportunities for business growth to primarily serve this neighborhood, of which you have my husband, one, two, three, four, five, six people in the small neighborhood, in opposition to this, and to provide a mix of uses, and a diversity of housing types to Rutland, and in the beginning of this conversation, we talked about how there's two of the same types of business, and so we're not providing a mix of uses to serve this neighborhood by allowing for this special permit, in my opinion, and I think that there's, again, in my opinion, that there's a few different parts of the, this section of the bylaw that haven't been addressed, one of them being landscaping through this conversation, I understand that you want to keep it the same, but there are some requirements listed in the zoning bylaw, particularly in this section, that I don't feel were addressed, I would like Rutland to be a vibrant community, I don't feel that this brings vibrancy to our community, I would love to see you do something with that plot of land to serve your family, but unfortunately, I think that this business would be at a detriment to the Butters, thank you for answering my questions.
Is there any other questions, comments from the public?
There's one Zoom guy, I'm not sure if he's here for that, there's two.
I've got a couple of questions and comments myself, thank you.
Okay, would you please identify yourself?
Yeah, I'm Joel Higginfielder, I'm at 180 Berry, Bexton Room.
Go ahead.
Yeah, my comment, I'd like to echo those of the others so far, my main issue is with the landscaping of the site, and the fact that there isn't any, and I have a direct view of this from all inside and outside of my home at all times, I feel this is going to devalue my property and potential for resale, and in addition to that, I also feel there's some environmental issues that need to be addressed, including the collection of fluids from the used cars, since they're on a permeable surface, so I'd like to hear what we have to say about those.
Okay, now there is gonna be no repair?
No repairs, no sir, all repairs off-site, no storage of fuel.
So therefore, fluids and that sort of thing is not going to be an issue?
Yeah, I'm just concerned about the cars that are gonna be parked there, and whatever they may leak.
Whatever they, do you want me to not answer it, don't, okay.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Well, one's saying yes, one's saying no, it's...
No, I'll be quiet.
Nobody can guarantee what cars are gonna leak, if a car leaks, then it's gonna be cleaned up, I mean, I think one car leaking, every car going down the highway leaks, so this guy's trying to sell the cars, he's not gonna put oil underneath the car, just makes common sense to me, that'd be my answer.
Well, that'd be a...
Yeah, that's fair, but it's not one car, it's thirty, and it's across the street from my house, directly over my drinking water.
I understand your concerns, is it okay if I answer this question?
Go ahead.
I don't, won't yell that by you again, there will definitely be nothing to, and I could say this as an expert in this field, that what he's bringing on there would be any more jeopardizing to your water system that's, that's available now, from storms and whatever, there's gonna be five quarts of oil in each vehicle, per se, that's a, just, and if five quarts of oil leak out, that's not gonna hurt your drinking water, but I would understand that this man trying to sell the cars is not gonna do it having leaking cars sitting on his lot, that, that would be my answer, your concern about drinking water, I have the same concern.
Not only that...
It's his, it's his drinking water as well.
It's my drinking water, but not only that, Joe, you have multiple vehicles driving down 122, that could be leaking oil, or antifreeze, you don't even know.
Trucks are the biggest problem, Joe, truck storage is the biggest problem, tractor-trailers, they hold so much fuel and oil, that's the biggest problem for EPA and CONCOM, and I've dealt with this for years, but a single vehicle, or thirty single vehicles, is not something that would, with the topal, the grade of your land, from what I see your water sources, I do not personally see, and what Julian, the surveyor, the land engineer, can't see how that would affect, that would be before CONCOM anyway, if that was gonna affect any kind of water system.
Well, among, among other things, you're not bringing in a bunch of junk cars.
It's not a salvage yard, we can clear that up, this guy's trying to feed his family, that's, that's all he's trying to do, is feed his family.
If they're going to be resold...
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
I would say they're more, no more likely to leak oil than any other car would.
Right, that's a question.
Yes.
He just mentioned Julian, who's Julian?
Here's the surveyor.
He's the land surveyor, I'm sorry, I went and developed... The town is familiar with it, so I'm sorry.
What's his last name?
Voturba.
Voturba, Julian Voturba.
He's been in town forever, on what I know.
He is, he is a business right on the Rutland, Rutland border, next to House.
If you're familiar with him was the point, and I'm sorry, I interrupted.
Joe, you're correct.
Does Joel have any more?
Yeah, anything more from Joel?
No, I just wondered if you would like to address anything about the landscaping and how this changes the view, it's, it's not been like this for a hundred years, it was probably two years ago where this was clear-cut and filled in.
Joe, if I could make a suggestion, if it's okay with the board, I, I, I just wanna say something real quick, I mean, it's only gonna be beneficiary for him, and for him to clean that site up, and make it attractive for people to come in, people don't wanna come in and see just an empty lot of sand with cars in it, so I would, the board can't make them do that, but I would tell them, that's the best thing they could do, is beautify their property, which will enhance your view, right?
But all of that, Joe, in the summer, the trees block your house anyways, you can't see anything, coming down your driveway's tough.
But that's kind of a moot point, that's kind of a moot point, he wants to make it better, not worse, it's not pretty the way it is, but I would assume, if I had a business there, I would want to make it attractive to come into, I would think that's what you would do, Rachel.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not trying to be an adversary to you guys, I just wanna point out that the plan, it says it's not doing anything to adjust the landscape.
It's not required to, Joe, but I think that will be addressed, it's not required, is that okay, can I answer that?
Yeah.
I mean, I'm not sure how these men run, but I'm a little out of sorts with the...
First part he said, it's not pretty the way it is now, and hardly he said it's never gonna change.
No, we're talking, we're talking the grades.
The grade, the topal, topal means the elevations.
You said it's not pretty.
The topals aren't gonna change, to me, a bare-sand lot is not pretty, I mean, I'm not gonna destroy you, Joel, or anybody about that, I don't think it's pretty now, but if I'm putting a business there, and wanting to sell cars, I'm gonna try to make it with some bushes, and something that makes it look a little better.
You said it's not gonna change.
Well, no, I said the topal's not gonna change, topal's not the art, it's not the landscape, it's the elevations, that, so the elevations aren't gonna change, and I said that about the water.
The elevations already changed with all the...
Well, that's before, that's before, we're talking about now, we can only go forward, I can't do anything about behind, except for try to help you with the problem, that's all I can...
Excuse me, sir?
Yes, sir.
If you would speak a little earlier, because I can't hear other people, my hearing aids are...
Not a problem, I just wanted to make sure everybody could hear me.
We do have good audio, so, thank you.
I, I, I would say from just, you know, looking at the, when we did the sidewalk, looking at it, I think it would be very beneficial for some enhancements.
I agree with that one hundred percent.
To that, and I don't know if the board is interested in trying to add some sort of a condition, it would have to be kind of broad.
It's gonna be hard for you to enforce that, I mean, it's... We're voluntary to do that?
Trying to look.
It should be landscaping.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just, you know, as he's saying, you know...
We're actually voluntary to do that, the board doesn't have the power to do that.
Everyone's landscape is different.
Some section's a three-foot picket fence, you know.
The bottom line is, everybody has a different yard, no one's gonna tell somebody else, oh, your yard has to look like, unless it's unhealthy, and that comes under the board health.
I have, excuse me, I have a question, I don't believe that we've talked about signage, is that part of the special permit?
I'd just kinda go through the...
No, it's definitely a...
Well, it's not as, not as part of the special...
Not as part, yeah, it's a sign bylaw, yeah, sign bylaw will be, have to be enforced.
It's a state road, it's a state road, so that's...
It's a state road, so they told me I had to go to the state for the signage.
I don't know that.
I could see, yes, you have to do that.
You have to stay off the easement and put the sign on your property, which you go through the town of Rutland Building Inspector.
Okay, so, alright, so that's a...
As long as you're not on their property, you don't have to deal with the state, if you come on, like...
Any easements, you would have to deal with the state.
Exactly, that's the key.
But it's not, it's not, it wouldn't be before you.
Yeah, okay, but it's a separate, that's a separate application.
You would also have to follow, there's a sign bylaw.
Yeah, I know, it's like a six-by-six or something.
We're not given to that part.
You know, the town, to town Rutland, no sign, that's right.
We're not to that point yet, so...
To the point of landscaping, the zoning bylaw has some really great guiding factors that could be helpful to this applicant, I'll just read the very first part of it, the applicant shall incorporate appropriate landscaping and design elements into new and expanded development within the district, so it is a requirement, landscape design plan should ordinarily be prepared by a landscape architect, although the planning board may accept a plan prepared by one other than a landscape architect if it believes... it believes the plan meets the design guidelines noted below and is in concert with the intent of the village center district. And then it goes into details and a variety of sub-bullet points of what those requirements are. And so those could be some great guiding principles to help appease abutters.
And when we wrote that, we were talking about...
Town center.
No, not only town center, but down the four corners and the buildings right around that area is what...
Yeah.
And also, we had lid in there too, you know, for parking and limited retention form type of thing and all that.
I guess, this is my opinion for the board is, if there was any thought about landscaping that you guys were thinking to do, is there any chance on this, this drawing?
No.
Okay.
We'll not obligate. We're not dictated to do it, we would be glad to do it and work with the neighbors. I don't think that's being dictated.
I have no, I have no plans on making any changes to the land. And that's why, you know, when you came out, you saw it, it was fine.
I'll let you guys, yeah, I drove by.
We did the sidewalk and everything looked fine.
Very.
Yes.
Sorry, just a bit of a again. I just had a question about the lighting, I believe it was solar lighting that's gonna be lighting the lot, are there, is there, how many like solar lights? Are they actually shut off later? Or are they just gonna run after the business is done for the day?
They're solar, they're motion activated, or I can flip a switch and have them on constantly.
It's advantageous to leave them on, what would you think as neighbors, what would you think would be best?
I mean, they'll be on the lot, not on your house.
Across the street, so...
Well, I'm asking, would you rather be lit or not? We're here to try to work with you.
I'd rather it be a lit, just in case, you know, any deterrents or anything.
Security wise, or if you think it's, you know, that's room for discussion, which I quite honestly think we could be more productive between ourselves to make this work than having the planning board discuss these issues.
It was on the plan, that's why I...
No, I agree with you, and I'm saying, what would your opinion be? Would it be better to leave them on, have them off at a certain hour? We're open, we're open for ideas.
I would think shutting off after business hours, but it depends what the light looks like and how they feed it and everything else.
That's not a problem, but it could be with insurance. And I can't dictate, once the insurance say it has to be a lit lot, then that would have to be. If possibly one makes it happy, the neighbors happy.
There's three lights, yeah, that's the answer that you asked for, there's three lights.
Yeah, I know, great, about how big and, you know what I mean, how...
Don't have details, all we've got is positions of lights and that's it.
I think we've supplied a lot of information, we tried to. So if something is missing, it's missed me, but we're glad to answer. Your consultants will work with you, any of you, the way you want. He has my card, the gentleman does, so...
See, I would, and again, I understand the need for lights for security purposes.
Yes, that's why I couldn't answer yes or no without the insurance.
Looking at the drawing here, the light out near the road, I would think you would not need to have that on all the time.
Well, it's not pointing on the road, it's facing the light.
It's actually like a street light.
But you wouldn't need that, but the lights in the back of the lot, yes.
Cause there's no, if you go down 122 at night, there's nothing for lighting. So it'd actually be beneficial to the vehicles and everything.
That was my question to them, would they rather have a lit driveway coming in or would they rather have lights off? I mean, we're trying to accommodate, we're trying to feed his family, that's all we're trying to do.
My many years with the street lighting department, you can get luminaires that focus and so they're not glaring in your windows. You can do all that, that's all stuff that can be designed.
Yeah, it's kind of way outside the scope of what we're trying to do.
Yeah, I'm just saying, to appease the residents, there's options out there that can be handled.
He's paying me by the hours, so I don't mind, I'll stay here all night. Not a problem.
Sounds like our attorney, Mr....
We gotta move on.
Yeah. Is Joel, does he have any more questions?
No, I think you've covered everything I have at the moment, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Okay.
Any more questions?
Any further questions for the public, first of all? Okay, any further questions or comments from the board?
I don't have anything covered.
The only thing that, it still, it sticks a little bit in my mind, is this idea of landscaping.
It's not really...
All I'm saying is, the place looks...
I know it is, but it hasn't been dictated, and it's gone before town meeting without being dictated.
Mr. Chairman, that doesn't...
Yeah.
With respect to landscaping, that what went before the town needing is just a zoning change.
Right.
So that did not involve anything to do with...
Right, that's what I saw out of it too, was that that wasn't part...
I want to hear what Dave's got to say.
With respect to the board's ability to put reasonable conditions on decisions, that is within the board's purview. The board can place reasonable conditions onto special permit approvals with respect to lighting, to make sure it's directional downward, landscaping, hours of operation, maximum number of vehicles, so forth and so on. That's a reasonable function of a planning board, is to put conditions on and approve if it sees fit to do so.
I believe we've met those, sir, I think we have.
I mean, you came out, you saw that, it was fine.
The board can actually put a condition on the special permit that says you will...
We're asking you, what you would like us to do, that's all we're saying, what can we do to make it...
We were about to tell you what put by conditions, so I think...
So you're going to make more conditions on this?
Well, they're gonna talk...
Well, okay, that's, I was just trying to figure that out.
We have probably a dozen of fifteen or so standard conditions to go with almost all special permits.
Okay.
Move to close the public hearing. I'll second that.
Do I have any discussion on that?
I think we don't have that.
So then we can go ahead and talk about conditions.
Yes.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Eight oh seven.
Okay.
So the next step is to come up with what we want on the special permit, if there's anything else outside the boilerplate, correct?
Right. I'm trying, I'm trying to think of some other word other than landscaping.
Enhance the appearance of the entrance. That leaves it pretty vague, but I think they get, they get the point that Sean's not trying to mess the negro out. We're just trying to do, come to across the bridge. So if it's lighting or some sort of shrubbery and landscaping, I would anticipate as a businessman, that would be done voluntarily. I'm a businessman, I would do that. I don't think that has to be dictated, but if you feel that need, that's why.
Should we currently close the public hearing?
Yes, we are discussing now, which we can, we can still talk with the applicant though.
And the public hearing is closed.
Yeah.
Yeah, but it's discussion, we can discuss with the applicant.
Yeah.
Not what we want.
But I mean, not, okay, you can be a touch...
It's a slippery slope, I understand, yes.
You know?
I don't know, I kind of, I kind of even like his idea of, you know, putting in a condition about enhancing the visual, whatever.
I'm stoked. I mean, as you came out and saw, I don't wanna block off the...
No, no, no.
No, no, the idea is, and this is my opinion, I don't want the front of your property blocked off where people can't see cars when they drive by. That doesn't make a bit of sense to me from a business perspective. But on the side of, against landlord, Mr., I think it's Nichols, I've seen. If there was some landscaping there...
Yeah, there's a bunch of trees.
Again, I went by and saw some, I just, it was, things like that is just, and I like Norm's philosophy of enhancements.
Actually, that was my philosophy.
Okay. He was agreeing with it.
You get credit.
Yeah, and then the only other thing that, again, I was, it was more to Beth's comment is, in the special permit to indicate that we would like directional lighting that would be focused on the property and, and the vehicles, not, you know, you've got those ones over in Holden, in the, over by the golf course, that basically you're doing this with planes for landing because it's spread out all over the place. I, that's why I would prefer to have in the conditions directional lighting on the property.
That's not gonna problem at all.
Yeah, and that's, that's, other than that, and the enhancements, I don't have much else.
Mr. Chairman, with respect to these so-called lighting, landscaping enhancements, is there a location where you'd like to see set enhancements or otherwise...
Set entrance was what we...
Excuse me, thank you. Or otherwise get it to some more details, or you just wanna leave it general like that? I just need some direction, so when I write this decision, I have something to work with.
I think we almost have to kind of keep it general.
Okay.
You know?
Alright.
To enhance the appearance, how's that? We go with something like that, does that sound decent?
Yeah. Do we put a timeframe on review, or do, I don't want to overstep, I'm just... So I know you want to get your business started, I get that, I do. I just, again, I apologize, I like to have some teeth in conditions.
Yeah, I know.
But I don't want to go too much, it's that fine line to walk.
Yeah, in two years.
In six years, I'm fishing, I don't really care.
How long is this special permit good for?
It's good forever, as long as he makes use of it.
We can review it at any time, correct?
It only expires if he doesn't make use of it within two years.
Yes. And we can review it at any time, yeah.
If I could, in terms of that kind of a thing, if there's a zoning issue, I would go to the building commissioner. Typically, the board doesn't review decisions on any kind of schedule unless there's a condition of the decision that expires on a date and a time certain. Or otherwise lapses of ownership or something like that, and has to come back.
Okay, thought we'd had something in there. Oh, maybe this was a different one, every two years, oh, I know what that was. Forget it, that was the growth management bylaw, forget it. I don't want to go down that path.
Good thoughts.
I'm just trying to...
Do we quit prior to opening? I mean, I don't know, Norm, because that's, that's sort of...
I don't even want to go that far, but...
I'm just, I'm just...
Oh, we want to, basically, we're talking about planting some shrubs and...
Enhancing, yeah.
It might not even be shrubs.
Pardon me?
It might not even necessarily be shrubs.
No, but I'm just trying to establish the timeline.
I do say that, from what I've heard, the tire thing, in my opinion...
That's on the...
That needs to go.
We can rectify that.
Okay, I mean, that, I'm not a big fan of that in any place in town.
Neither are we.
Well, go ahead, Norm.
Put that in a condition?
Great, thanks a lot.
Okay.
I'm Dylan Randy tomorrow.
Free tires, by the way.
Yeah, yeah, bring them over to Farms, they use them for silage. No, 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 I don't want any, I'm too close to a beaver DCR area. I think the enhancements, I just don't know how to...
Tim, can we read the exact language that had to be detailed?
No, if you're gonna write a condition, you wanna write the condition at this time. If that's how you'd like to leave it, then that's how it's gonna be drafted, so...
What would you write right now for what we said?
I'd take it down landscaping enhancements, that's what I have here.
But, you know, the applicant shall, you know, shall endeavor to make visual enhancements to the site?
A suggestion, if I could make it, it may muddy the waters, like trying to be very specific with that, but you have, his, is the owner's word, that it's, the tires we take care of, and it's gonna make his property, his project, his business better, to enhance that. I don't know the specific, the way you could say, you know, spruce tree or oak tree.
No, we don't want to do that.
It's a slippery slope when you get into a real muddy water.
In terms of the time, I mean, maybe by the spring time, April 1st or May 1st, some enhancements, whatever those might be.
Yeah, I don't want them now in the middle of winter.
If you're looking for some suggestions.
Yeah, I would say midsummer, I mean, that's more, I mean, that's spring and summer to take care of anything.
The 1st of August.
Yeah, it's a chance to get your business started, get some sales rolling, and get some income.
August 1st?
August 1st, that's an excellent date. Yeah. And then the only other one, Norm, is, like I said, put in there directional lighting onto property.
The lighting be directional.
Yep, that's, that's one thing I want to make sure of, so...
To minimalize the...
Clear.
What do you call, you've got the words, you always have the words for me.
Obtrusive.
For lighting.
I want to see the stars.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Cause I like to keep looking up.
Yeah, and Mr. Streetlight, put them all there.
Minimize effect on the neighborhood.
Yeah, the directional takes care of it, because if you put directional on the property, you're asking for it to be on the property. And not on the road and across the neighbors, so, yeah.
But quite honestly, that's what we want lined up, is the property.
Yeah, and security and...
Exactly.
Yeah, I get it. That's all I've got, I don't have anything else.
No, that's all my two issues.
So I guess, you know, the question, does this meet our special permit criteria? Is there anybody?
I'm concerned it does. And I have a good feeling that in ten years, she's gonna be wanting to use Kyle a lot across the, on her side.
I think for what the intention that we did for the businesses, Norm, for the village centers, the northern village center and town center, I mean, my opinion is, I want to get businesses in here because the alternate, what we've been doing with these centers, is we put houses in. So, and, and more and more building of multi-houses or townhouses, that's what I was thinking of, so to get a business in here, I'm just...
We need businesses.
I'm honestly, I get it that there's two other ones out there, I do, but to get some business in here, I'm excited about it, so I just, I don't know. I think it meets the, the special permit, it doesn't meet specifically, because this special permit application is a broad special permit.
Yeah, you can't...
But the intent for what we're trying to do with the village center, I think it's met it. That's my opinion. I want the rest of the board to know.
I agree.
I think so. So...
And with the conditions, I think we're in good shape too, I don't know, I'll take any other...
Anybody, any other suggestions for special conditions? Obviously, the usual boilerplate ones to put in.
I did, just thought of this one question, I apologize.
Really?
Yeah. I got one more. I need a trip.
I have cereal for breakfast sometimes.
No, no, actually keto crap, but, are, the entrance, is it gonna be at any time, like locks secured?
We can't answer that right now, we actually can't answer that yet, because there may be gates at some point to lock the road. That's his right, to gate that, if it needs to be, security wise, we would hope not.
Well, with that, if everybody's ready, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to adjourn, yeah.
Motion for what?
Motion to grant the special permit.
I'm going to motion to grant the special permit on Barry Paxton Road, what's your?
One seventy five.
One seventy five. One seventy five Barry Paxton Road for the car sales.
Can I add on to that, with conditions?
With conditions.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Shall I call old Randy? Is there any discussion?
No, 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 no.
Is there any discussion?
She did it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The only thing Norm might say is, I keep seeing one seventy five and one seventy five A, which one is it?
It's, it's one parcel, but then they, um, the town clerk says they need to do a.
So I just want to make sure the special permit, one seventy five, is that what, okay, good enough. I just, I want to make sure we get our i's dotted and p's crossed, that's all I'll make sure of. Okay.
Now.
No, they got to make a motion.
Just, just by the way, I, I do appreciate.
Yes.
The participation by you people here, I can certainly understand very, very much the concerns. But, the way our bylaws work, the way state law works for that matter, as well as our bylaws. This is a permissible use. Uh, and, you know. Yeah, we, we, we run into some of these things, you know, all of the time, as a town builds and grows. Uh, you know, I, I remember a couple of years ago, we had some people in, they had built some houses down on Pleasantdale Road. And they were, they were told by the builder that nobody could ever build behind them. A year and a half later, all of a sudden, these people in their backyards, just in back of their backyards was a normal houses. You know. It happens. And. One of the things that, you know, has, has been a problem for the town is attracting business. We can, we can attract all kinds of residential stuff, you know, we're building houses out here like mad. But to balance a tax base and that sort of thing, trying to get businesses, is, uh, number one, is not easy. And number two, we tend to want to grab it whatever we can, uh, you know, for businesses, anyway.
To jump off that, Norm, that was the intent when, years ago, when we did the village center and the town districts. Was we wanted to get small local businesses in town, because it was just, it was a struggle. Like Norman said, houses were going up everywhere, but we weren't having any businesses, so that was the, the push which we got from the CM RCP, which is a central mass regional planning. To do, to, a suggestion to do that, and that's why we initiated it. And fortunately, early on, we weren't getting any businesses, they were putting in townhomes. So, again, I, I, I do appreciate public coming in and talking, it's great to get participation. But from the perspective of them following the special permit, I think they did it. It's just, uh. I get it, it's car business, so.
And I'm going to put my two cents worth in, what, what makes more money for the town? A house, a building a house, or open space? Open space costs, that town makes, I think it's a dollar twenty something an acre on open space, because they don't have fire or schools or anything else. But a house, they never have enough money, so. Always think.
Honestly, with businesses, the hope is you're bringing people into town.
Yep.
People that typically won't come into town. You know, maybe Carlott brings three or four people in the town, they see Four Corners, they come to eat here, they see Lads, they want to eat here. I mean, it's just. We, it's a hope.
We need the people to get on more boards and start hearing more things. Did you know that Mark the Basket was asked to come to town? Did you ever know that? And why did they turn, why did Mark the Basket turn Rutland down? Because they thought the idea was great, because of all the surrounding towns. Because we did not have the highways for them to bring the trailer trucks in.
Yeah. So if anything, why you're here.
Yeah.
It was at the Rutland Heights, is what they.
Now you want to bring business in, there you go.
Next Tuesday, you're going to see a hundred and forty something houses might be going up there.
Senior housing.
Senior housing. So, since I got you captive here, if you're interested, please get involved in town government, get on a committee.
Yeah.
Run for something, please. I'm, I'm begging.
Want to toss my hat in that ring?
If you're, if you're a Rutland resident, yes, please.
You could move to town.
Yes, there's plenty of. So I ask.
Twenty-five years on, on Concom and, and almost twenty-five now on planning board.
Now it's your turn for historical society.
Eight years from now, when you're fishing, one of us can jump on.
Please, yeah, I, I'm.
What you guys do that does not get appreciated, because I know it takes your time off away from your family, I've been doing this a long time. I have a lot of respect for the time you give into this, to protect your town. So, this is Doug Joplin.
Yeah, because there's.
Thank you for hearing me tonight, and I'm sorry, it's not a credit, everybody.
Conservation, Select Board, important Select Board, we just, we need, it's tough getting people to run it for the Select Board. Conservation, like I said, um, other boards and commissions, um, earthworks, egg commission, all those, need people.
They need to pay the people more.
Well, there's no payment, they're all volunteers. It's, it's more volunteer work.
Exactly.
So.
But it is, it makes you feel good, though.
Yeah.
You just want to address the schedule for the, for, we have to write a decision, and the at-risk part you were discussing earlier with the other applicant. There was a question from the applicant on the process from here on.
So, yeah, you know, okay, we've taken the vote, basically, the special permit is approved. However, it takes time for our staff to actually write up the notification of the decision. Once that is done, hopefully, maybe, but again, I can't guarantee it by next meeting, we can then sign the decision. The decision then goes to the town clerk for a twenty-day appeal period. You can start business during that appeal period, but you do so at your own risk, until the end of that appeal period.
So, if I could ask, they could start tomorrow, is what you're saying?
No.
No.
You're saying fourteen, fourteen days your next meeting? Okay, okay, I was just trying to, I couldn't really hear you well. Thank you very much.
All right.
All right, thank you, sorry for taking up your time.
No, I want to stick around for our next hearing. Marijuana, it's going to be grown in Rutland. Right, right down here, the old Sims cab company.
There'll be a growth facility there, and then across from there, there'll be a sales. No, that's a sales facility.
Sales facility, but where Sims cab company is, in there, they are building that right now.
They're going to grow it there, huh?
They're going to grow it.
All that fifteen thousand square feet of making those nice cabs for the tractors now is going to be organic.
Yeah.
I tell you, I think that makes more sense than this.
Supposedly now, some, I, I heard the two more months, the place is, is built in there, but there's no equipment in there yet.
Yeah.
I didn't see, did you see any, Norm, in there? Yeah, no equipment in there, but they said in two months it was going to be.
Was that all by somebody from Barry?
Could be. Across the street is the person who's in charge of selling the marijuana.
And that's from Barry, if I'm not mistaken.
He's from Barry.
Yeah, yeah. He's, Lee's building the facility for him, then he's going to run it.
Higgins.
Higgins, yeah, that's it, yeah. Yeah.
Very good, thank you, gentlemen, you have a great night.
Yeah, and one lady.
And a lady, you've got a lady right there.
I knew you had a lady too.
Thank you, everybody.
All right, take care.
Well, I can just say that was a lot of good interaction.
Yeah.
Yeah. I guess I probably did offend, what's his name there?
That's okay, Norm, you, you, taking control of the meeting, let's get it out of control, I respect you for doing that, because we've got to, you can't just let this get, devolve into back and forth. Because she had good points, and, and he, he needed to listen to her points, and I think that, that you took care of that. I think you did a great job.
He was just trying to overwhelm everything else.
Yes.
She kept saying, well, we have paperwork that's not being shared by the public, that's why they look on.
Yeah.
The two pages that this line is.
So what is the situation on this next hearing?
Is it continued?
Uh, no. Number five, I believe, Mr. Chair.
Yeah. We never did open.
It has not been opened? My background for this, if you'd like.
Yes, please.
So, this is a matter of a special permit for marijuana cultivation at seven nineteen eighty-one Main Street. Uh, the applicant is not ready to proceed, they are still waiting for a provisional license, which is an essential requirement in order for the hearing to be held. So the applicant has signed the form requesting a postponement until the twentieth of February.
Okay.
We already have that for the applicant.
I was hoping you weren't going to say the fourteenth, Dave, because we've got a lot to handle on the fourteenth.
The applicant was given the calendar, and then this is the date that seems to work best for their timelines.
Okay, good.
You're going to keep it at seven fifteen?
At this point, there's no hearings in particular scheduled for the twenty-eighth, this will be a new item. Fifty-two pack has been dealt with, one seventy-five Barry Paxton Road has been dealt with. The only items out there are, um, our hillside subdivision, which is scheduled for a time certain.
Is now on the fourteenth, though?
That's on the fourteenth, so.
Yeah, so it's not.
You have flexibility on the twenty-eighth, I think.
Should we move it to six forty-five and inform it, Norm? If we don't have anything else? I don't know, I'm just, I hate, I hate waiting, if we, if we start at six thirty, we'd have to wait forty-five minutes if we get everything done.
Wow.
Because this is sort of our light time of the year, isn't it?
So would it be?
Yeah. You know, unless you get something like this.
Yeah.
You know, and if something like this happened to be the first hearing, then. You know, I, I don't know, I don't, I don't know if there's a way to really, well, you had mentioned that there, there might be some other way of doing that?
Well, I think that's a bigger discussion, it involves whether or not times are allocated to hearings or not. For, for the purpose of this matter, if you put six thirty, then there's a date, a time certain, and things will just go in the order that they're, they're on their agenda, unless the board takes things out of order.
So.
But I think that's a discussion maybe we should have offline first and then bring it to the board.
Let's just leave it at seven fifteen, I mean, that's what it's scheduled for. The applicant knows that they've got to be here at seven fifteen, so let's just leave it, that's my opinion.
All right.
Okay, so it sounds to me like we are up to number eleven.
Actually, I'm, I hate to interrupt, is there a motion to this effect, to grant the postponement until?
Oh.
From tonight until the twenty-eighth, at time not to be determined, but seven fifteen?
So moved.
Discussion? In favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
All right, now, that's done, eleven.
Okay, eleven. Do you have the decision on the?
You already signed that.
We already signed, yeah, we already did that.
I'm going to see slack time.
Uh, twelve.
That end's not available tonight, I apologize for that, I.
Okay.
We'll have that at the next meeting.
So let's move Dave to two fourteen?
Correct.
Excellent. I just saw that calendar, too.
That's in the supplemental packet, the last page.
Rapidly trying to find that, so it's, what's the top of that?
It was the calendar.
Oh, right.
Yeah, that's what I got to find, I tore it apart, because I wanted to pull out the Barry packs and stuff. Oh, it's probably the pack.
I love, I love these packets, and I want all of the information. It's really easy to just get. And, and I don't, I don't want to do it any different.
Dave, you do a great job.
Yes.
I want to put that out on the table, break now?
Yes, definitely.
I got thirteen.
There we go, I found it. Find the staple. Go to the last page, and there's the calendar.
Yep.
Got it.
And where's the calendar in here? These are all Tuesdays.
Yep.
Yeah, I mean, I, I checked it against all the major holidays to see if there were any conflicts, I didn't notice any. Uh, the one that might be something that the board may want to consider is maybe the number of meetings in the summertime, we'll do that case by case, and then is the meeting on the twenty-sixth of December scheduled? Is that a board, that, is that a date that the board would like to keep, or not? Obviously, this can be altered as time goes on.
I'm going to say no.
No. I can pretty much, my opinion, the board on that one is a big negatory.
Yep.
Too many relatives in town.
So strike the twenty-sixth, at least, okay.
Let's see, how many of these are going to be zoomed?
How about none?
None. Uh, did you match these up to any Monday holidays where the Select Board may move their meeting to a Tuesday?
There are a few that may be affected by that. I think the board would just keep its meeting date and find a different location. Or depending on how much workload one board or the other one has, to make this room available, if there's a hearing, or there's no hearings for one board but for another, or whatever, the case may be.
Norm, I couldn't hear what you said, somebody's going to move to Tuesday?
No, they just said, you know, if there's a Monday holiday.
Oh, I see.
And the Select Board, and maybe it's on Monday, then they just move to Tuesday.
They move to Tuesday.
And all of a sudden, we are looking for a home.
Well, I think.
We have, we have one.
Maybe it's vice versa, maybe it's depending on what the workload is that night, or whether there's hearings involved. Is, are these other meetings where we'll be back online next week, so.
It's not a regular meeting, but we do have the February meeting with the Board of Selectmen.
I was going to say, isn't that on the ninth?
The ninth?
I think so.
That is correct.
I've already had to cancel out a meeting at Central Mass.
Is there a time established yet?
I don't believe.
I believe it was six o'clock.
Six P M, and here, this room.
That's correct. I have information on that, which I will forward to the board as soon as possible.
Okay.
However, the board had already discussed it, and chose a date and a time, but we will get that information out again. As a refresher.
Okay.
And Dave, I can tell you, just from, I know my vacation schedule, and the board, June thirteenth, I will not be here, I will be out of the country. So, I know that for a fact, because the better half of myself, she's already made plans for that, so.
Yeah, I, I appreciate you mentioning that, Tim, I'm going to make a note here that you're not available. In my email to the board on this matter, I did ask the board just to confirm that the ordinary means of communication with the board are still accurate and up to date in terms of emails and phone numbers. Does any change to let this, to let the office know? Or if there's a preferred method to get this information, if you want it delivered to you by hand, I can do that, or mailed or whatever, if you have any special requests, we can honor those. Otherwise, we'll just go with the way we usually do things. Taking note that the board meets on the second and fourth Tuesday, show on the calendar. That the information on file for board outreach and availability is what's going to be used, unless there's an indication to change it otherwise.
I'm, I'm happy.
My, my email is still screwed up, but I have a new phone now, and that's my task for tomorrow, is to get it straightened out.
And I guess if there's any times when you know you're not going to be available, just let me know, so I can try to coordinate legal notices accordingly, and otherwise, you know, adjust the schedule.
I will try to stay healthy.
If you could tell me which one of these, you know, dates that I'll be winning the scratch ticket, and I'll be leaving then.
No, no, I'm going fishing in six years, not you.
I got my million, million tickets in my pocket.
Oh, no.
That's right, too.
I'm still trying to find the young lady that won the. In Maine, yeah. You need a son. I will take care of you to the best of my ability for a minimum of a million a year.
Okay, item fourteen, Z B A number, any comments?
I, yeah, where's the well? On Mark Sodowsky's.
Item fourteen, um, can we go back to the, um, calendar and, uh, how about a bylaw meeting next Wednesday?
Yeah, I think what we've been doing is rotating the meetings, so that's a play where bylaw committee would meet on the off weeks of the planning board.
Yeah.
On a Tuesday ordinarily, unless there's a conflict with other meetings, boards and commissions.
Okay, so you're going to do it on Tuesday?
Tuesday actually works great for me, because I'm working at home, and I've got, I'm not, I don't have to try to get away from Southborough to get here, so that. I'm not, I don't have to try to get away from Southboro to get here, so that, if you guys do that, I gotta hide probability of being there, yeah.
Thirty-four is, is starting the Tuesday then.
And then we find out town's got one point five million dollars in the free cash.
I, I am asking Mike to hide it.
No.
Yes, I don't want this town to have any part of it.
It's going into roads and buildings.
No, I want it to go to the R D I C.
Yeah, it's not gonna happen.
To improve the properties that they have.
I need my roads fixed and my town halls fixed.
Well, no kidding, they need roads fixed, but why isn't it being done anyways?
Yeah.
Is there any action on fourteen?
Yeah, fourteen.
The board doesn't have any comments?
Well, the only thing, you know, when I was looking at the map, I did not see where the well was.
I think the well really is a separate proceeding than what the zoning board is concerned with.
Okay.
They're concerned with a special permit to modify a non-conforming structure. Previously, this was before the zoning board for a, for a, for a variance, because of this land size, what the zoning board made a determination, that is in fact a non-conforming situation, so the special permit was warranted not a variance, so now it's back.
Well, didn't, didn't this come, something similar to this come before us a while back, if I'm not mistaken?
Yes.
And we, we said no, if I remember correctly.
No comment.
Yeah. So, that's what I was gonna suggest to the board this time around.
Yeah, no comment.
No comment.
And then the other one is a variance from the side yard setback, you could sort.
Fourteen B, we did make a comment, because it was over on that, on a Cleese, I can't think of the, what is the name of that subdivision of Cleese that, uh?
Darren.
No, it's, um, they wanted to build a garage.
Oh, that's.
Scott Winnaker lives on it, I can't think of the name of.
That's on Darren Ross, is that?
No, but, but we did make a comment similar to this on another piece of property, where they wanted to build a garage.
But is this on Darren's part?
Well, that's what, that's what this one is, but I was trying to make a point that, yeah.
I know, I just wanted to make sure.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
About which one are we on now?
Oh, yeah, fourteen, fourteen B, we made a comment, because they were over, and I can't think of Scott Winnaker's driveway or road, but they wanted to, and it was like a foot into the ten-foot.
Yeah.
And we made a comment back saying that it didn't deter from the, that's what I'm looking for, from the.
Visual?
Visual area in there.
Yeah.
So, I was thinking, to be fair to Mr. Ross, we would do the same type of thing, because I took a drive over there, and those properties are pretty far apart.
Oh, yeah.